With us today are directors Tracy R. Load, Asir Zara Onan, Foshe, Fergus Kerr, Derek Rantz, and Chief Financial Officer, Arain Lahari, Vice President Investor Relations Bob Tate, and Vice President ESG and Corporate Secretary Tim Campbell. Notice of this meeting together with a form of proxy or voting instruction form were mailed to all shareholders. Copies of the meeting materials are available on the company's website. With the consent of the meeting, we will dispense with the reading of the notice of the meeting. Proof of mailing of the notice calling the meeting has been duly filed. The secretary will keep a copy of the notice and proof of mailing with the records of this meeting. I now ask Amy Cam of TSX Trust to present the scrutineers' report.
Mr. Chairman, I report that there were two holders represented in person or by proxy and 178 management proxies received representing 137,372,872 shares, which is forty-four point five eight nine percent of the issue in outstanding shares.
Thank you, Amy. The scrutineers' report confirms there is a quorum present. I declare this meeting to be regularly called and properly constituted for the transaction of business. The next item of business is the presentation of the company's audited financial statements for the year ended December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, and the auditors' report thereon. Copies of the financial statements are available here today and on the Global Atomic website. I would ask that you hold any comments or questions which you may have on the financial statements until the end of the formal business of the meeting, at which time we will be pleased to respond. Only registered shareholders and duly appointed proxy holders who have logged in with a valid control number are entitled to vote at this meeting. All shareholders are welcome to submit questions using the Ask a Question button. We will conduct the votes on the matters before us by a poll. In a poll vote, registered shareholders and duly appointed proxy holders are entitled to vote on the matter. The poll will be open for all resolutions at the same time. To vote, click the Voting button on the left side of your screen. This will allow you to choose to vote on each resolution immediately or wait until conclusion of a discussion on each resolution before casting your vote. If you have submitted your vote in advance and do not wish to change your vote, no action is required. I now declare the polls open on all resolutions. The first item of business is the election of directors of the company for the ensuing year. May I have the nominations?
I nominate Tracy R. Load, Asir Zara Onan Diayio, Dean Chambers, Richard Foshe, Fergus Kerr, and Derek Rantz, and Stephen Roman, being the directors named in the Management Information Circular dated May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five for election as directors of the company.
I second the nominations.
There being no further nominations, I declare the nominations to be closed.
I move that Tracy R. Load, Asir Zara Onan Diayio, Dean Chambers, Richard Foshe, Fergus Kerr, Derek Rantz, and Stephen Roman be elected as directors of the company to hold office until the next annual meeting of shareholders or until their successors are elected or appointed.
And Mr. Tate?
I second that motion.
Yep, Chairman, please vote now, everybody. We'll wait five seconds for the audience to vote. The next item of business is the appointment of the auditor of the company, and I ask for a motion to reappoint Ernst &amp; Young LLP Chartered Accountants as auditor of the company and to authorize and fix the directors or authorize the directors to fix the remuneration of the auditor.
I move that Ernst &amp; Young LLP Chartered Accountants be reappointed as auditor of the company until the next annual meeting of shareholders of the company and that the Board of Directors of the company be authorized to fix the remuneration of the auditor.
I second the motion.
Please vote now. The next item of business is the approval of all unallocated options under the Corporation Stock Option Plan through the period ended June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-eight.
I move that unallocated stock options under the plan, as amended from time to time, are hereby approved and authorized, which approval shall be effective until June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-eight.
I second the motion.
For those who have not yet voted on all resolutions, please do so now as we will shortly close the poll. We'll wait for a few seconds here. I declare the polls closed for all resolutions. Based on the information before me, I declare the motions presented to this annual and special meeting, the election of directors, the appointment of the auditor, the approval of all unallocated options under the Corporation Stock Option Plan through the period ended June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-eight, have been passed by shareholder vote.
I move that the meeting terminate.
I second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. As there is no further business to be brought before the meeting, may I have a motion to terminate the meeting?
Early there, I moved. I moved that the meeting terminate.
Thank you. This concludes the formal business brought before the meeting as set out in the notice of meeting. I declare the meeting closed. Please stay online for an update on the company. And TSX Trust, I guess, thank you for attending and Amy for your help as scrutineer. So we'll go to our presentation now, please. Any chance of making this larger on the screen? I guess not. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending today. I think many of you that are here listed, we have a large group of people, guests, that have attended this meeting, that are attending the meeting, and we'll just run through our PowerPoint presentation. There's been a number of updates on it. You may have seen it on our website over the years. But we're making tremendous progress at our project site and like to just go through it with you. So we go to next slide, please. As you know, we have two operating divisions, a uranium division with our project in the Republic of Niger, West Africa, and we have our zinc recycling in Iskender, Turkey with a joint venture with the Bethesda Zinc. That is a cash flowing asset. The uranium project is currently in the construction phase to be put into production by next year. Next slide. So DASSA, the name of the project, it's the only greenfield uranium project currently under development in the world today. There's been a number of brownfield projects that have restarted or in the process of restarting, but this is the only new uranium project currently being constructed in the world. This is the next slide, please. We can go on. Located in the Timmersoy Basin, so this Timmersoy Basin is the large sedimentary basin in Niger that hosts all of our or that country's uranium deposits. That's where Orano Mining and others have been working and Orano had two mines operating for fifty years. So our project is located in that basin and it's similar to Canada's Athabasca, but of course, very underexplored. Next slide. So this is just a little shot at a glance, so we are the highest grade uranium deposit currently under development in Africa. Of course, all of our permits, et cetera, are in place. We have well over five hundred people currently working at site doing earthworks and civil construction. Our feasibility study from twenty twenty-four showed sixty-eight million pounds of production over twenty-three years. Now, this feasibility will be updated again and it'll be a process as you do more drilling, move more inferred to measure and indicated resources, you will be updating the feasibility study. But currently, that's what we are showing in our twenty twenty-four feasibility and that's what we're developing the mine on right now. So the mining, we have our ramp to the ore body completed and we're doing level development currently. Our plant construction, our earthworks are almost completed. I would say it'll be another month or so before those are completed. The civil works are well underway as you see there with rebar being placed and cement being poured. So this is in preparation for installing all of the plant mechanical equipment that is now, a lot of it is on site already and more of it arriving every day. Financing, you'll be aware that we just did a small raise. That's expected to close tomorrow. And we've had questions from people, why are we financing at this current time diluting? We can get into that a little bit further. I'm sure there's going to be some questions. This is a project in a in a country that was taken over by military coup. It's a project that was well underway prior to the coup when our share price was significantly higher. We had very little dilution at that time, but of course, because of the coup, our share price went down significantly. The project was well underway and we had to keep things going because under this regime, you just can't stop the project. So we're happy to talk about that as we move along, but I just wanted to give you a high level view on why we are continuing to move things forward. We do have offtake agreements, of course, with US and other utilities and we need to start delivering next year. That's another big incentive to keep the mine construction moving. And of course, we're doing everything under EP four and IFC performance standards. So this project is being being done to very high level standards, which has been corroborated by other people from outside visiting the site. So we are expecting to commission by the end of Q two next year and start producing yellowcake. Next slide. This is a snapshot of what the ore body looks like currently with the yellow being the inferred resources, the blue and purple is M and I. As you can see there, the grades at the fifteen hundred cutoff are very significant in the five thousand PPM range. And the mining is starting up at the top there in that large area that you see close to surface, we call that the flank zone. So that'll host actually about eight to ten years of mining just in that area before you get into the main part of the ore body down below. Next slide. Our feasibility study of twenty-four gave us economics that you see there in front of you at seventy-five dollars a pound, which we are about at that level right now. It shows an NPV after tax at an eight percent discount of nine hundred and seventeen million and an after-tax IRR of fifty-seven percent. So we do expect, like most uranium producers and the nuclear industry, that uranium prices will be moving higher. You can see what happens to our our returns and IRR as the price moves up. And of course, the last peak we had in spot prices not too long ago was at about a hundred and seven dollars a pound. Of course, the all-time high in uranium prices back in two thousand and seven was in the range of a hundred and forty dollars a pound. So we expect actually over the coming years, the price will go through the old high. And of course, this makes this project absolutely remarkable. So we can go to the next slide. So this feasibility study you can see in green there on the bar chart. We expect to be producing about four million pounds a year for a long period of time. We're showing twenty-three years. You can see how it declines there in the green bars. But we've added the inferred resources. As we drill those infers, we will move them into the mineable category and the idea is to maintain a steady state operation with about four million pounds a year production. Now that's at a thousand tons per day. So our plant's been designed to initially have a throughput of a thousand tons per day. We think that there's enough fat in it that we could probably run it at about twelve hundred tons per day. But eventually, given the market and further drilling at site, we could expand that production and actually move higher than four million pounds a day. So this is, this is sort of what we're expecting to do currently with our feasibility and the way the mine's being designed right now. Our openings, for instance, our ramp, our infrastructure underground is capable of running at two thousand tons per day. So, you know, there's a lot of growth potential here, both on the mining and throughput side, but also on the resource development side because this deposit remains open on strike and down dip. Next slide. This is, and I won't go through all these numbers, but they're all on the website. You can look at this PowerPoint there. But the total CapEx you can see there about three hundred and thirty-eight million, the total sustaining all the way through was six forty-six, that's for the life of mine. And we have contingencies in there. We've currently spent oh, in the range of two, a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy million US on the development of the project. We spent another fifty-six million on exploration and development. So so far, you know, we're in the two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty million dollar range that we've spent developing this project. Next slide. So this is our plan for the coming year with the underground development and the level development. So we'll open up all those levels and the idea is to have about fifty thousand tons of ore on surface prior to the mill startup. So this shows your levels. In between those levels, we'll be doing long hole stoping. So that's a very efficient, low-cost way of mining this deposit. And it's sitting fairly vertically. We don't get into any horizontal type part of the deposit till we're probably eight to ten years further down and we get into the main part of the ore body. So this is a very efficient way to get the mine started and we should have very low overall costs. And of course, the grades here are quite exceptional in this flank zone area. So we should come out with some, some very good numbers in our initial years of operation. Our feasibility really shows that we'll have payout in just over two years. Next slide. This is a shot of the ramp going underground without all the people in it. So you can see it's been paved. We basically view this as a long life, thirty-plus year ore body. We need to build an infrastructure that'll last for the life of the mine. So you know, we have everything done to very high standards. And you can see there on the side, we do already have some ore grade material on surface. We basically are running into that as we're developing our ramp where some of the ore body is larger than what we expected from our modeling and some of the ore zones do come out into the footwall and you get some of that ore going into your development mock and coming to surface. So that we've stockpiled and we will be using that through the mill once the mill is operating. Next slide. Just some shots from underground, you can see the size of the ore zone there from our miners looking at it there. And then you've got on the top picture, that's a big raise bore machine that we used. We've now drove, driven our big ventilation raises using that boring machine. So the mine is very well ventilated. We're well within any kind of limits as far as maintaining proper airflow through the mine. And you just see some of our team there with their masks on, unfortunately. So we will keep going on the next slide. Next slide, yep, okay. These are just some shots of the SAG mill and acid plant construction and there is Rain Lahari standing there in front of some of that equipment at site. So we have a big laydown area there and we're bringing all the equipment in and of course, putting in the, in the laydown area sequentially, we'll be taking it and installing it on those civil works that I showed you earlier. We might have a few more pictures of that. So the acid plant was built in India and we shipped it to site from Kolkata on the east coast of India. So we have equipment coming from various different parts of the world. Logistics are a big big issue, let's say. You have to get the stuff to site. You're in a remote location. Of course, with the military coup, the Benin border's been closed and our normal port of Kotnu and coming straight up the path to our site has been shut off. And so we've been using Burkina Faso and Togo and more recently Nigeria, which seems to be working very well for us to bring all of our equipment to site. So we've had to be very innovative, I would say, in our approach to solving issues and getting materials to our site. Next slide. More pictures, as you see over five hundred people working here now. And you know, we have everything there from our warehouse, our our briefing room, training facilities, civil works. You can see everything going on there. This is a fully integrated operation being done to North American standards. That's one thing that I will point out is that for a new development company to be fully staffed and operational from top to bottom is, is something exceptional. And we've managed to put a tremendous team together. We had a stroke of luck in that one of the Orano Mines, Comenac, shut down just when we were getting going. So there was a lot of top quality, very trained people available, which we've integrated into our operation. We have some expat training going on where we bring people in to train people on new equipment because all of our equipment is state-of-the-art equipment that we're using at site right now. Next slide. So on the ESG front, we do a lot in the country. So you know, we've been there really the first I, I went to Niger to study the idea of picking up some permits there was in two thousand and five. So it's been twenty years I've been in the country. We signed our permits in two thousand and seven, started working in the field in two thousand and eight. And really, over this period of time, we've done a lot of community support, including food during drought periods, medical supplies, drilling water wells for small communities. We recently refurbished a school, brought in all the equipment. I don't know if we have any pictures of that here on this, but we'll show you if we have it. And we've now got literacy training as well. So here's, here's a graduate class, I would say, that we conduct right there at site. And we have our first batch of graduates here that, you know, obviously are very excited about learning both skills in the mining sector, but also language skills, writing skills and all of that. So you know, these are things that we do on an ongoing basis. You can see some trees there in the background. We have a big reforestation tree planting program as well. And we also work on market gardening with local communities in order to grow things that we can then use at site. So we create a secondary business for people in the region. Next slide. So again, for the government side of things, for the, for the benefit of Niger, of course, the government's going to get royalties, taxes, income taxes from, from people. With the amount of people we have there currently, I'll point out also that about ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of the people we have working here are local people. And we have our two big contractors currently, the earthworks contractor and the civil works contractor are both local groups. So they, they just love it. I mean, we've got so many local people working here and the multiplier effect in the region and, and right, right across the country in Aguedes and our, in Niamey, small towns and villages, they're, they're all involved here supporting the project. It's very, very exciting for the local community and it's, it's really the only mining project currently underway in the country. So you know, it's, it's high standard and it's been very well supported by even the military junta are supporting this project. Next slide. Strong community relations and social engagement. Just a little bit more of what I was talking about earlier there in the top right. You see the, the school we rehabbed and we brought in all those desks and the, the next picture to that on the left is our medical facility. Now, our medical facility, we've had to expand because on top of handling all of our own employees, we're, we're handling probably sixty to seventy percent of the people visiting our medical facility are local communities. So we look after everybody in the region. You can see down in the bottom right, a market gardening where they're growing tomatoes and onions and various other things. There's some pictures of some community discussions with local people. At the bottom, the bottom picture there with two guys wrestling, we financed, helped to, let's say sponsored a big nationwide wrestling competition that was held in Aguedes. And it was a very exciting situation there. Well-attended, you can see the, the crowd there in the background. Another picture of a water well there with a group of us standing below a water tank. So that's what we do is we drill a well, put in a big tank. It saves basically women with donkeys from walking fifty or a hundred kilometers to get water. We, we bring this into small villages and it just totally changes everyone's life. Next slide. This is a visit by the Mines Minister, Minister Barchi, a year ago. And he, somebody pointed out this picture is the first time we saw him smile. So you know, he really thought we're doing a great job. And as I mentioned, he's been very supportive, the entire government. We received a letter from the president. So, uh, you know, he really, uh, thought we're doing a great job. And, uh, as I mentioned, he's been very supportive, the entire government. We received a letter from the president. And on down and, uh, everybody is, is pulling for this thing to be successful and, and get into operation. Next slide. That's a picture of our, uh, new camp, Alita Camp. Uh, this, this is just, uh, being completed right now. You can see some sewer and water line, uh, digging there. But, um, that's gonna house two hundred and fifty people. And we have a couple of other camps, uh, close by that are all attached to this. Uh, we call it the Dadji Camp. Um, so, uh, in total, currently, as I said, we're over five hundred people. They're not all there at the same time. There's a rotation of shifts. But, uh, we handle all of that. We, uh, we feed everybody, house everybody. And look after them medically as well. So in twenty twenty-five, uh, we expect, uh, we, we are going to have. Uh, culmination of our project financing or JV. Uh, which will allow us to keep the momentum going and get this project finished. Uh, twenty twenty-six, we want to declare commercial production mid-year. And start delivering yellow cake to utilities in Q three, Q four next year. So, uh, of course, with the financing. Comes additional off take agreements. So we've got. Oh, at least a half a dozen utilities now that wanna sign on with us, uh, soon as we get the financing done. So this is. Clearly the biggest catalyst for the company to really explode, so to speak. As we get that done and we were able to keep the momentum going. Uh, we'll have, uh, a lot of additional off take agreements that people will want to sign. Utilities will want to sign with us. So, uh, next slide. Uranium, I don't think I need to talk about that, but, uh. You can see this, uh, supply, demand curve here. And with all those bars at the top there, that's basically taking into account all known uranium currently. All projects. And, uh, with, uh, with the huge. Let's say, uh. Renaissance and, and nuclear energy. And everybody wanting to have clean carbon free base load power. Um, there's just not enough uranium out there. Uh, since Fukushima, of course, so that stopped all basic exploration for ten years. That's gotta be caught up. And just like I mentioned that I was in Niger for twenty years. You know, it, it, we didn't develop, we didn't, uh, discover Das until the end of twenty-ten. And that's basically Fukushima hit in March of twenty-eleven. So then. You know, most uranium exploration stopped. Uh, it takes a long time to develop these projects. It doesn't matter what country they're in or what jurisdiction. It takes a long time. And, uh, the fact that we are where we are in the curve, the development curve with a fully staffed operation. It puts us in a different league from most groups out there that are trying to move projects ahead. On top of getting financing for many projects. They need to find people that are going to build the projects and then work at the projects. We, we've done all that. So the only missing piece we have now is that final piece of financing. Next slide. This is our zinc operation in Turkey. Uh, we returned to profitability here. Uh, we take waste from local steel mills. We reprocess it. We make a high value zinc oxide concentrate. Glencore is our biggest customer. We ship to Europe from our own port facility that we share with, uh, steel mills. And, uh, it's a long life business. Uh, Bethesda has been a fabulous partner. Uh, we developed this new plant, uh, and built it in twenty-twenty. Uh, we went through a bad period in twenty-twenty-three with, uh, major earthquakes in Turkey that basically shut down the steel industry in the country. But now we're up and running, uh, again. And of course, uh, if you go to the next slide, please. Then, uh, you'll see in the first quarter, we have a million and a half dollar EBITDA showing for our share. So, uh, we expect twenty-twenty-five will be a, a very profitable year and. And you know, if zinc prices move up a little higher, well, that would be good too. But, uh, this is a, a great project, uh, and as a matter of fact, this project. Is what kept Dasa alive for ten years. Really after we, we merged, uh, with Silver Med in twenty-seventeen. Uh, we, we used cash flow from here. During a period when there was just no money available for uranium equities. So, uh, we can go to the next slide. That's our executive team here. I don't know. I think, uh. Some of you online today probably know some of this team, but, uh, very experienced group. I won't go through everybody's CVs here, but. Um, I think, uh, generally speaking, uh, we have a very top level management team and they're all doing a, a great job. Next. Slide. Uh, at, uh, site at Somida, our local Niger company. Our managing director, Musa Suley, he used to be the MD also at Comenac. And, uh, Mr. Tijani and Maman Isab, all very experienced people. Uh, we have a, a site general manager, John Wheeler. Who came from a gold operation in Mali. I think he's actually quite happy to be with us now and not in Mali. Uh, and then a very, very competent, uh, technical, uh, team that we have in Niger. Uh, that you can see there, uh, with all of their positions. Next slide. This is at the end of May. So we typically update this chart at the end of every month. Uh, I don't know what it's gonna be like at the end of June. I don't know if it's gonna be back at ninety-three cents or not, but, uh. Clearly if we have a big, uh, event here with our financing. Uh, we will be passing that mark, uh, very significantly, I would say. And, uh, we just, uh, are very appreciative. Of our shareholders and our supporters and the financial community. That have been supporting us and this project all the way along. So, uh, I wanna thank everybody. Online and all of our financial community that have given us that much support. Over the last couple of years since the coup d'etat. Next slide. That's it. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for, uh, listening. And thank you for being here. Um, I believe we're going into a question period here and Mr. Bob Tate's gonna come back online and. And, uh. Read some of your questions that have been coming in this morning.
Can you hear me, Stephen?
Loud and clear.
Good. So you mentioned during the presentation, the possible expansion of the plant. And a couple of questions about that in terms of. A possible in future is that you increase, increase the nameplate capacity from a thousand to two thousand. But also, uh, what is the timeline for that? And does the timeline change depending on whether we get a JV? Or a bank financing?
Okay, uh, good question. So I would say that, uh, the idea is to run the operation, stabilize it maybe for. Two to three years before we would contemplate increasing nameplate capacity. The current plant has been designed with an increase in mind. So there's space there for additional tankage, additional, uh, lines that are required. I would say that, uh, that, that, the time to, to do an expansion would be twelve to eighteen months. But it's not something that we would contemplate doing right away. Uh, I would say whether the JV happens or the bank. The bank, I would expect would want to have their money paid back before we start spending money on expanding. So if we pay them back quickly over two or three years, then of course we'd be. Open to, uh, looking at the expansion at that time. I would say with a JV partner. Uh, since there would be no bank to pay back. They would probably be interested in doing an expansion quicker than, than waiting. But I would say in general, it's going to be three years at least before we would contemplate bumping up the, uh, production.
Thank you, Stephen. Um. Given, uh, the dilution that resulted from recent equity, uh, issuances. Uh, do you plan to, uh, at some point buy back shares?
Absolutely. I think, uh, you know, I've mentioned that to shareholders in the past. That, uh, we would definitely like to do a, a normal course issuer bid once we have cash flow from the Das operation. And we're able to use that cash flow to buy back shares. So, uh, that, that is the plan.
Okay, next question. We, we talked about that we had, uh, agreed to major terms with the potential JV partner. And, um. Would that cover, uh, based on the terms that have been agreed to, would that cover the remaining CapEx to bring asset into production?
Short answer, yes. Uh, the, uh, the big, uh, negotiation point is valuation of the project. And, uh, I believe we've, we've settled on a valuation. Um, so now it's just governance terms and, and operational. Let's say structuring. Uh, but, uh, the capital coming in would cover. The balance of the required money to complete the project.
Okay, given the political uncertainty in the region and the fact that some potential mines have been disrupted by the current. Uh, Linta administration in Niger. Has management considered the sale of Dasa?
Well, we've, we've discussed it very, uh, lightly, I would say. We haven't, we haven't really had a. A board discussion. On whether we would sell the entire operation. I don't think that would be what we'd wanna do. Uh, this is a company building asset. We, uh, we view this as a real cornerstone for the continued growth of global atomic. And, uh, either way. Whether it's a JV or a bank financing, we maintain control. Uh, we are the operator. And with the kind of cash flow potential coming from this asset. I believe we can build a great company. And rather than having a short term payout of. Four or five dollars a share to shareholders. If you sold the whole asset and of course you'd have to pay taxes on that. Uh, so you know, your value gets diminished. It's, it's much better value to shareholders if we continue with what we're doing. Build it out, start producing and, uh, rerate the company into the. Eight to ten dollar range and then look for other opportunities to diversify the base.
Okay, this shareholders obviously been following the Irano story. Uh, wondering if we have any insights as to whether, um, the Somera mine has been producing. And whether they've been able to export product. And he says he's asking. In the hope that the government will be further incentivized to sort out the Benin border situation so they can export. And monetize the yellow cake stockpiles.
Well, Somer has been operating on sort of a scaled back level. They do have inventory of yellow cakes sitting at site that they have not moved out yet. Uh. I think the government is afraid that the French. Have mounted some sort of a campaign in Benin to attack Niger. And so they wanna keep the border closed. Uh, we've discussed moving uranium out in different ways and, uh, we're working with them on al- alternatives. To, uh, shipping uranium. Uh. But, uh, you know, the big issue with Niger and France is of course the colonial past and the. The fact that the Niger government views France as effectively an enemy. So they, uh, they've done what they've recently done and. Declare that they will nationalize the Somer operation. I think the, the big. Reason for that is just to eliminate. Anything to do with France. So, uh, the uranium will be shipped out. Uh, we don't know exactly how yet, but, uh, we're working on a couple of different, uh, methods of doing that.
Okay, I think this is the final question in queue at the moment. Um, twenty twenty-four was supposed to be the culmination of financing and here we are. What makes this time any different?
Well, during twenty twenty-four, of course, uh, we had, uh. A big presidential election. And so that whole campaign started in October. The DFC, uh. Didn't know which way things were going. So basically they put things on hold pending the election. And then when Mr. Trump got elected, he froze everything for four months. So it's just been a series of issues that have delayed. The DFC. And so right now, uh, we know because we speak to our bankers every week. That, uh, things are on the roll again. And we do have, uh. I would say very optimistic view, given the fact that Mr. Trump has declared he wants to quadruple. Uh, nuclear in the United States. They are currently burning fifty million pounds a year in their current reactors in the United States. If you wanna quadruple it, you can see that's gonna go up to. Two hundred million pounds a year. All US production adds up to about five million pounds a year. So they have got a big delta there. They've got to fill. And, uh, they won't get it all from Canada. They won't get it from Kazakhstan because most of that goes to Russia and China. So who's left? Uh, basically the Dasa project in Niger. So I think they have a big incentive to complete this deal. And, uh, we are pushing things along.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. I have no more questions.
Thank you, Bob. Well, if there's no more questions, again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I'd like to thank our. Toronto and world financial community for supporting us. And, uh, we appreciate it and we'll keep things moving forward as best we can, uh, given. Uh, the cards we've been dealt. So please, uh, have a great day and we look forward to keeping in touch during the year. Thank you, and we'll hand it back to TSX Trust.
Thank you, everyone, for attending today's meeting. You may now disconnect.